All right, that was fast, wow. Took me like-
Lightning fast.
Took me 15 minutes to do that yesterday.
It's that broadband bill or vote already kicking in.
It's true. It was funny, we had a telco attended the broadband meeting yesterday. Roll out fiber in town. What a coincidence. All right. Someone have a background going somewhere else on YouTube maybe? Thought I heard an echo.
You may hear the dog being fed.
Where Mark taught his dog how to talk.
Okay, so this is a little blue, I don't know how to exactly tell the story without being, well, you know, so-
We're live on YouTube, okay?
It's okay, yeah, I think it's okay. So I row in Belfast and a friend of mine came out of the public restrooms there by the harbor. And he goes, I don't know quite how to like, how you can exactly time it, but you absolutely have to see Ando's dog use the urinal.
I can believe Ando's dog can use the urinal, I know Ando.
Isn't that a Great Dane?
No, it was a black lab or something, I think.
Yeah.
Maybe he used the kid's one, I don't know.
He can lift his leg really high, huh? Wow.
All right, we're at 5 o'clock Ethan, I think there may be some people trying to join us this evening. So maybe we can give a second on this.
Okay. I was still trying to get the agenda printed out, I don't-
Do you have it?
Yeah, I have it, I just don't have it printed out or on my display.
Oh, did he, did Chris, Chris, you sent it again today, the agenda?
Yeah, that's someone, I think Andrew had asked for it.
I was having a hard time getting to some emails.
Can I, can I just, I will remind everyone and maybe if I didn't say this before, all the agenda information is on the town calendar. So you could go homepage on the town website and the link is there and the agenda is there and all that stuff's there, so.
That would involve like two extra steps.
I find it there, but I, there have been days when I haven't found it posted in the early afternoon of a meeting day, so. But today it was there.
Yeah, I mean, doing what we can.
Ethan, did you get the public hearing procedure?
I did, thank you, Jean.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right. No one, no one there, so we can probably get this meeting going if you want.
Okay.
You can start it or I can explain the process and then-
I can open it real quick and then we can get going, I guess. Camden Planning Board Meeting Thursday, June 17, 2021. We'll start out first with an introduction or process description from Jeremy and for the public hearing. And then we will move on down the agenda.
All right, and just so everyone out there, there's two people waiting to enter the room, so hold on a second. Andrew's with us too and Mark just got in, so. I suspect there may be some others as well wanting to come in. Now wait for Andrew to formally get on here. Looks like it's trying. It says he's joining, I don't, I don't see, does anyone see him on there? No?
Not yet.
Give it a second, maybe I'll just explain where we are, so we're Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, June 2. We're operating under Zoom procedures still, as we have for the last year plus. Where that's all gonna go, I know some board members have expressed interest in maintaining this type of venue, maybe a hybrid or something along those lines. That said, again, this is, we asked for comment, public comment previous to these meetings. We are monitoring for comments continually. I have heard from some people via phone and I do expect some other people may join us today. Yes?
I just want to add, the select board voted funds to make the meeting room hybrid so that we can combine Zoom attendance and in-person attendance. It's going to take a bit of time before we can do that. So, but we're working towards being able to facilitate that.
Appreciate Mark and I just want you to know, as I think, and it wasn't really about all necessarily about them, you know, about the public, it was also about Planning Board members and their availability and their ability to attend.
And same, same with us, they're, you know-
Okay, perfect.
Select Board members have to travel, travel from time to time. And I just might add, at least you still have one Select Board member that wants to come to these meetings, I don't know about that new guy, but sorry, couldn't resist.
Yeah, all right, Andrew in yet or no? No. Looks like he tried joining another way and he's still not able to. Andrew, if you can hear us, you can always try to do this on your phone as well, just click the link and try to turn off your video, that may, if you're dealing with a bandwidth issue, you may be able to attend via just voice if you can hear us. There we go.
And Jeremy, just real, well, no, nevermind, I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
I was just wondering, do we need to elevate a, an alternate? Either just for this meeting or permanently, is that something that's on the table?
The Select Board will be, I think the Select Board are the ones that will be naming someone an alternate and I am-
You missed the chance to say selecting someone.
I mean, I'm certain you guys can make a recommendation if you want, but it's up to the Select Board to make a appointment as they appointed two alternates.
I think a recommendation, obviously we have two very talented alternates. A recommendation and comments from either one of the alternates about who wants to step up would be appropriate.
I did just have some information, I'd emailed Jeremy and Jean last week about some of my availability. We're going to try to be in the UK a little bit more this year for my husband's family. And that could take some days, it may end up being an immaterial amount, I'm really not sure. But just thinking if it takes maybe a few more days out of the year, then I would expect to normally be gone, I thought, given that potential, that it would be great if Andy wanted to step in as the full voting member, just for that reason. And I will say, I'm certainly interested in becoming a full voting member, but for the very short term because of the extra travel we could be doing and such. I felt better about remaining as the alternate and I guess, I didn't know, Jeremy, if there was any comment on that.
Sure.
That was how I was seeing it.
Yeah, Janice is the one who will send out and I don't recall, though, it was kind of the your timing and your appointments was a little different than normal. So we've got to make sure, just match it up with Janice, Janice will, if we need you to apply again or whatever we need you to do, we'll, we'll make sure we do that within the next couple of weeks. And then get the Select Board, I think what you had to say says a lot and my gut says is the Board would probably move Andy to a full member and then bring on another, a new member that we do need to get since Matt's no longer with us. But we'll-
I talked to Janice about appointments and if Pat wants to remain an alternate, all she needs to do is let Janice know through you and the same with Andy, he doesn't have to file a new application, he just has to let them know that he's interested in moving up and then the Board can support those decisions and that's, that's it.
Super, thanks Jeanie, there you go, Pat.
Thanks, that's good.
Yep. All right, Ethan, there we have it.
Jeremy?
Yes?
Why don't we let Andy speak a little bit about his-
We can hear you now, yes.
Yeah, so I'm kind of in a similar situation to Pat. In that my travel is kind of unknown. I'm starting a new job on Monday, I know there'll definitely be travel. I don't know what the extent of that is, it'll be more than I had in my ledger. So, you know-
Okay.
Given the time of the meetings, I think I'll be able to support the meetings remotely if we go to a hybrid format. But it may be more difficult if that doesn't happen. You know, I, I don't really have a preference, I'd be happy to be a full member instead of an alternate. I think between Pat and I hopefully cover all of the meetings.
All right.
Hey Andy, can you put your microphone a little closer to your mouth?
Yeah, I'm on a different computer tonight, so I'm gonna try and switch to my headset.
Oh, okay, thanks.
I'll mute.
Oh, and when we were talking about hybrid meetings, that would be great if we could continue something like that because I could certainly attend some meetings like that even if I'm not in the area.
Yep, all right.
Midnight Planning Board Meetings.
You do need, you do need to, to raise one of the alternates up as a voting member for this evening for ordinance amendments, they can participate all the way through to the vote.
Thanks, Jean.
Yeah.
Shall we, shall we do that real quick?
Yep.
Who was last? Put your hand up if you were last.
I don't remember.
I do think it was Andy, so I'll make a nomination to elevate Pat to a voting member for the purposes of the June 17 meeting tonight.
Somebody got a second that?
Second.
Okay, let's take some votes, so Chris O.
Hi.
We got a discussion, is that Mark with a discussion?
No, that was me voting in favor.
Okay, okay.
Mark's in favor, got it, okay, Anita?
Hi.
And it's an I from me, so that's unanimous and that will be a voting member tonight. Thank you. So then I guess now we'll get back to where we were, Jeremy, and then you can start to discuss the process.
Yeah. So I guess I'll introduce what we have in front of us tonight, I got someone in the waiting room. All right, we got Stuart Smith joined the waiting room. Stuart, we're just starting this process right now, so. I guess I'll introduce what is proposed and we're having a public hearing tonight on proposed zoning ordinance amendments specifically to the off-street parking section. Part two, section four of the performance standards. We've had a handful of discussions, workshops if you will, on this subject. And as I've laid out before and I'll say it again, communities, downtowns, villages, you know, the center cores of communities across Maine and across the country have kind of recognized over time the negative effects of off-street parking requirements in downtowns and, and you know, centers of communities. And the negative effects on economic vitality, economic development, housing affordability, adaptive reuse of existing buildings in downtowns, historic preservation, negative impacts on small businesses, walkability of a community, the environment and even municipal budgets, to be honest with you, so. Lots of communities are doing this, we have looked at it over the last few years a couple of times. Belfast, Bangor, Bath, Brunswick, Portland, Sandpoint, Idaho, Burlington, Vermont, lots of communities across the country are doing this. And the Select Board has asked that I look at this and propose some ordinances, an ordinance amendment, and that's what you have before you, we've discussed it again a few times. I have, there are some, as we get through this, there are some public comments that I have received and I know we do have Stuart Smith join us today, a handful of other folks couldn't attend, but they did send me emails or sent me some information that from their perspective and I will certainly share that with you. And that's where we are, so I think at this point, I mean, I can go through those changes right now, where we are and I'm gonna, let me see if I can share my screen. I'm gonna close this chat. That was when Anita couldn't hear us earlier. Let me see. Everyone see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. And I can go down through this if you'd like, where we are. That first piece right here, this is a process piece that we're adding that identify the new amendments. And what we did-
Jeremy, if you can make that a little bigger on your screen, wider, they'll be, it'll be easier to view.
I can't do that, I don't see what you guys are seeing, I'm at max on my screen, Anita.
It looks large enough for me.
Okay.
Fine, yeah.
All right, blame it on my little laptop.
Maybe it, here we go, Anita, I'll just maybe kind of discuss them quickly.
Yeah, that's okay, I'll get my own coffee.
All right, so the dwelling unit is for the public out there, what we are exempting are dwelling units in the downtown or B1 in the Transitional Harbor District from having off-street parking, accessory apartments as well. General businesses downtown in the B1 and the BTH, which would include medical offices, retail, business offices, personal service, sports and fitness, industrial manufacturing warehouses uses, multi-family. What did we do there, we got rid of that. Lodging, what we did here is, there was, we included obviously motel hotels because there's, there was, obviously these are destination locations. And I gotta believe hotel owners, their customers expect to have a place to park, so I don't think that's a real issue, but we are requiring that them to have, continue to have off-street parking or meet the ordinance requirements for them. It was noted by Anita, the last time we got to, rooming houses are more consistent with apartments which are exempt, so we did make an exemption for B1 and BTH. Restaurants and bars, this is, we've chatted about this. Be fewer than 150 seats, we would exempt them from the off-street parking requirements, this proposal would. And then the second line here, this is just, just kind of a clarification, just reads better on the existing language, it's no, no change in the existing language really. And then for restaurants and bars with 150 or more seats, we would be requiring, again in the downtown and the Transitional Harbor, half the requirement that they, is currently required on the ordinances, ordinance and schools would be exempt as well. And these other ones are not, medical is not exempt, obviously. Public Assembly, theaters, halls, we're exempting them in the downtown and the BTH. And churches as well, campgrounds are not, that doesn't matter. And that's, that's the language that you guys have reviewed and kind of discussed, I know you know, that there was been talk about the 150 on the restaurants, whether that or not was appropriate, you guys discussed this last week. And you wanted to move this to public hearing, so that's where we are, that's what's proposed. I would just, from a, from a process perspective, it's possible that we do make some changes in this hearing process right now based on public comment and comment of the Board. So that is possible. Years ago was always understood that you couldn't do that and you'd actually have to come up with a whole new draft ordinance and then do a whole new public hearing process, that is not, not required, there's now an understanding and assumption that public hear- I've, you know, potential changes in an ordinance based on public comments, so as long as it's part of the public hearing process, we can do that. That's where we are. I can stop sharing my screen if you'd like and we can continue with the process, I'm kind of done on my end on that Ethan. It would be now the Board to see comments from the public.
Yep.
But you would need to open the public hearing and all that, okay?
Yep, thanks, thanks Jeremy.
Should I stop sharing my screen?
Sure, I think that's, that's fine for now, if someone wants it, we'll call it up.
Okay.
We will now open the public hearing. Comments are accepted through Zoom and via the YouTube channel. And we also have some prior submitted written comments. So the hearing is now open for public comment.
And we do have someone from the public here today and then I will, after that happens, I can read some public comment that we have received, okay?
Ethan, am I the only person from the public?
As far as I understand, yes, as far as attending the meeting, yes. So Stuart, you have the floor, but please, please state your name and residence for the record.
My name is Stuart Smith, I live at 35 Worcester Farm Road in Camden. My wife and I, my wife Mary Ann and I and our son Tyler Smith, who lives in Camden also on C Street, own several commercial properties, we own three ends or in, in downtown Camden in this district. And we rent to a lot of retail spaces and restaurants in the downtown area. And I just want to say, I'm very happy to see that the Planning Board and the Select Board are interested in amending and changing the parking ordinance. I've lived with this for over 35 years and I've seen its ups and downs. I'm not sure how much everybody here knows about the history of how this even evolved, but you know, for a long time in Camden, when I first moved here, there was no parking ordinance at all. And there were very few parking regulations, people would come to work, park on the street, leave their car there all day long. And it created, you know, a real bottleneck as far as any, any parking spaces for customers, so. Probably the most revolutionary thing that happened a long time ago was the two-hour parking and that sent, bristles up a lot of people's necks and caused major discussions and major fights, but the two-hour parking and then the parking tickets that came with it took a long time for people to get used to that, but it really solved the parking problem in, in the downtown Camden area by forcing the store owners and the merchants and the restaurant employees and other people from coming in, first thing in the morning, parking their car and working all day and then going home at 5 o'clock or whenever they left, so. That really opened up a lot of spaces, I think. The Parking Committee, I used to serve on the Parking and Traffic Committee for a long time. The instant institution of in, putting in the 15-minute parking spaces, short-term parking spaces like we have in a number of places. That really became a great tool for parking turnover, going to the post office, going to French and Braun, running into Camden National Bank. It really freed up a lot of spaces and again, kept people from, you know, parking there all day long. And, you know, we still had to resort to having a police officer or a parking officer walk around with his chalk to mark cars, you still had a number of people that just loved to try to beat the system, park their car, see the guy come by, they'd either go out and move the car or they'd wipe the chalk off the tire and try to stay there for the rest of the day, but I think in general, it's worked extremely well. The, the regulations that were put into place for different businesses or new businesses that would come in or new developments or buildings. I think truthfully, none of those have ever really worked very well. The people that have benefited the most from that are people that have had parking lots that have been able to lease their lots to other businesses and have made some pretty good money out of that. You know, the thousand-foot rule that you had to have a, rent your space as a thousand feet from your business to qualify. They did have some satellite parking, I'm not sure if that's still available now in the law or not, but it was a, it was really a a real negative thing to young people or any, any people, not necessarily young people, people wanted to start a business and all of a sudden they found out they had to find some parking spaces for it. You know, really put a wrench in things for a lot of, you know, a lot of people trying to get started, so. I think the more things you can get rid of in this ordinance as far as parking requirements, the better. There was a guy named Skip Thompson, he used to have a shoe store and he used to joke about Camden didn't have a parking problem, Rockland had a parking problem because there was no one going down there to park, so. You know, it's, it's, personally, I have never had problems parking, if I come in as a customer downtown to go to the bank, go to the post office, you know, even like last Saturday, busy, busy day, I came into town 2 o'clock in the afternoon, there were five parking spaces empty in front of the post office and the town was busy and so I think we're doing real well with what we've got, I think taking all these requirements away from the ordinance, I think is a great idea. Most of the people that have businesses in the downtown, all the restaurants, all the shops, they're really are relying on people just, you know, walking in the doors, it's not a someone's driving up to park in front of a particular business and then running in other than maybe French and Braun, but there's, you know, there's plenty of parking in the downtown area, just, you know, for those people to get in and out of town, so. I support what you're doing, I think it's a great idea. The one thing I would say with regards to the ends, and we have three different ends. And as an innkeeper and whether it's us or other innkeepers, that's a different story than a retail business or a restaurant business. And we've got a customer that's gonna spend the night there and they expect, if they have a car, and they don't all have cars, I mean, we'll have, I would say probably 80% of the people that stay with us do have a vehicle of some sort, the other 20% don't, so. Not everybody has a car, but the ones that do have cars expect a place for their car to be parked. Lord came in, has zero parking spaces on site. It was a grandfathered building, it used to be a Masonic Temple building and in the days of, you know, when you count the grandfathered spaces, we had way more spaces than we needed to qualify for all of our rooms and all of our retail stuff that went on in that building. So we didn't, we weren't required to have any parking spaces, but we obviously knew we needed parking spaces and we were fortunate enough to be able to buy parking spaces in the Camden Parking Company. Jeff Braun, who used to own French and Braun and Keith Patton, who was the president of the Bank, Camden National Bank, created the Camden Parking Company probably 35 years ago. Originally there were 65 spaces, I think, and they sold one space. One share was a space and then we ended up realizing that the 65 spaces were never full, and so we ended up leasing spaces above and beyond the 65 and the parking lot still is never full and some of that is because- And the parking lot still is never full and some of that is because I think we own about thirty two of those spaces. And you know, during the daytime, most of our night guests are gone, they're out driving around, going to see things. And so that frees up a lot of spaces for people that are working in law offices or working at the smiling cow or, you know, wherever their. Wherever their jobs are, be able to use those spaces, so. You know, that was a private sector solution to the parking problem. And you know, I, this is maybe not for the record, but. Some of these regulations you see in place here were put in place to kind of. Nudge property owners along to buy some of the parking spaces when we created the whole. Kind of the Parking Company, so. I think that was been a very successful adventure. And has, you know, been a good private sector solution to it. The parking lot that's over by the fire station, that had an interesting history. That lot was owned by the Tannery or not the Tanner, the Knox Woolen Mill, they used to have a big barn there where they stored wool. And they stopped using that and they wanted to sell it to the town, the town said, oh, we don't want to pay that much money for it. And the Knox Mill kind of got upset because they were just asking what it was assessed at. So Marianne and I actually bought that building and then a couple of years later sold it back to the town. For the parking lot that is now, we sold it for the same money that we bought it from the Knox Mill for, which was the assessed value. But those are the, you know, the kind of things that have happened in town. I think making these changes is a great support of local businesses, of startup businesses. If I had any suggestions, I would eliminate all the parking requirements for the restaurants. I guess I would ask Jeremy how many restaurants right now are have more than a hundred and fifty seats, probably. The only one I can think of might be the waterfront. And you know, the waterfront has nowhere near enough seats if you try to do it by the seat count or not knowing anywhere near enough parking spaces if you try to do it by the seat count. But I've never heard any customer or I've never heard Sam Appleton or any of his family or even Leonard when he was around. Ever say, oh, my gosh, you know, our customers complain, we don't have enough parking. People are parked all over the place or wandering around, they get, you know, they go to the waterfront and have dinner and they. Go have ice cream, then they walk into Main Sport or some other place shopping, I mean, it's. It all works together and so. To try to put the onus on one business and say you've got to have parking spaces or you can't be in business. Or you know, it's. I don't think it's a, it's a commercially supportive venture for the town and and I don't think we need it, so I welcome these changes, I think they're great, I hope you all support them. And my suggestion would be to drop the whole thing for the for the restaurants completely, so. Make Jeremy's life a lot easier easier and and I just don't see a lot of. Hundred and fifty plus restaurants coming into into Camden, so. Again, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you Stuart. Jeremy, do we have any other live public comment?
Well, make, I I will no other live public comments, but I do have comments, written comments.
I'd like to ask Stuart a question if I could.
Hi Mark.
Hi Stuart. So. Stuart, you you were on the Parking Committee, so could you, do you have an understanding of the. Parking trust that was created?
Well, I know that they created a trust and you could buy your way out of the parking. Situation, so if you wanted to buy. Phantom parking spaces and put money into that, you could solve your problem by doing that, and I can't remember how much there were, four thousand or two thousand a space. To my knowledge, I don't know anyone that ever tried to solve their problem by buying the spaces and. And if you were, if you were a. Startup business and you came into town and you wanted, you know, you were, you wanted to have a jean shop someplace or or any kind of little store. And you were required for some reason to provide parking spaces. I just can't imagine somebody who's signing a two year lease or a one year lease or a five year lease wanting to lay out. I'm not sure much it is now with four thousand dollars a space. For really getting nothing, I mean, you know, you'd be much better to rent your spaces from somebody, so.
Yeah, it was, it was my understanding that that. That account was set up for. Solving future parking problems or maybe creating future parking lots. And what what I don't understand is say, say you have a retail business, you're required to have. Four spaces. The business is there in town now, it goes out of business, another business comes in. Which requires four spaces. Aren't they grandfathered?
If they did again, Mark, I could try to answer that, I'm sorry.
So if if you have a business that has required four parking spaces. They go out of business, it's a new business moves in. Aren't those four spaces grandfathered?
If they were legally established. And the use group didn't change based on the parking. Use table, if you will, right, so certain uses require a certain number of spaces, other uses require another, so retail to retail. If they had existing grandfathered, existing conforming legally established parking spaces that were grandfathered. And it was going to another retail, then yes, those are grandfathered. Now, and then similar to what Stuart was saying, the Masonical, that was at X number of seats, probably we looked at that as a place of assembly. And said, okay, in a place of assembly, there are one space for every four seats, if you will, and if you got. You know, a hundred seats in that assembly hall, then and someone comes in to reuse it like a hotel, then you could take that. Those number of spaces that were there and apply it, so.
My point, so, so you've got four spaces that go with that building that are grandfathered. So if you need six spaces. Say with a, say you put in a coffee shop or something that requires seating.
So there would, it would be required in your instance, if they required existing new spaces, they would be required to go get those from somewhere.
Required to get two new spaces.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Okay, and we we can continue this part of it for the discussion when we get to that, I want to get the rest of the public comments.
Can I just answer Stuart's question about number of restaurants?
Sure, absolutely.
You've got Peter Otz and the waterfront both exceed the one fifty. I would add that. Blaze on their municipal application has one fifty, however. On their state license, it's like at ninety three or ninety eight. So legally, they're allowed, they have ninety eight seats in Blaze. So those would be the only, the only two that would be applied would be Peter Otz and the waterfront.
Did you have a number for C dog?
I don't remember off the top of my head, Mark, but they did not exceed the one fifty.
Yeah, okay.
But you. Just the other day, so I I looked at Blaze further.
Do you want to go ahead then Jeremy and introduce the comments that we received from the public that is not live?
Sure. And this is from. I think this speaks to what Stuart was saying, this is from Joanna Spinks. And she is from Oyster River Wine Growers, which recently came into town. She just sent me an email today about getting this into the record. And she uses some frank language, how absurd it would be for us to rent two parking spaces for McGunt took a realty's private gated lot. It would have cost us a thousand dollars each per year and our customers wouldn't even been able to access it, nor would they know to use that lot. Thanks for considering this issue. Brilliant. Speak further about this anytime and hope the rules will be altered, Joanna Spinks, Oyster River Wine Growers. And that was an interesting one, she had to come up with four more spaces, if people remember that spot, it was a restaurant years ago. Then it turned into a retail shop. We were able to continue to maintain some existing, like Mark refers to, some existing grandfathered spaces. But based on the what what they were doing there, retail store plus a wine bar. Forced them to get four additional parking spaces elsewhere. And they are required, they were able to find those at a. They were able to find those in an appropriate manner, so they were able to open, but. It was a real hard, hard one for them, I will say. And additional comments. And she was not able to make it tonight, she did call me and express support for these changes would be Gabriella Acero, I think is how you pronounce it. She's the owner of Wolf Peach, which is where the Druthy Bear is, similar situation. They had to go rent because they added a limited number of seats to a Druthy Bear head. They were required to go, I think, pick up two other spaces in a remote lot that. I think everyone, I think Stuart spoke to it, but I think everyone realizes no one really knows where those spaces are if you're a customer. And they're just there to meet an ordinance requirement. Even though no one really uses them. And then we also, they tried to get me something today, but the owners of Zoots. Coffee in town is. Ran into a similar situation and when they renovated the former retail shop. I forget the name of that off the top of my head right now what it was. So they're in support of these and I can certainly provide their emails moving forward, but they just didn't, weren't able to get them to me today. So we have that and then we do have a former planning board member Jeff Senders. Reviewed these, he sent some comments in. He being an engineer and being Jeff and being how Jeff is, rather than give us comments for the most part, he. Likes where we're going, likes it, thinks it's great, he did not like the. Exempting the schools. Rooming houses. And places of assembly and churches. From this. He did not have an issue apparently with the restaurants at all, but it was rooming houses. Exempting schools. Places of assembly, theaters, halls and churches, other than that, he is fully supportive of that as well. And he sent an email, I think I. Shared that with you all if I haven't. Those were his chain proposed changes, but he. He did not feel like it was an urgent thing to do, he said that in an email, but he did appreciate where this is going, so. That was comment from Jeff Senders, former planning board member. And that's all I have. So now it's you guys.
Okay.
You know, can discuss and.
Yep, so we will formally close the first public comment period. And. We will now go on to the. Or whether the board has any questions, I guess specifically to Jeremy, we can carry on, Mark, your discussion. Or any other questions. We're not quite in the deliberation stage, we are in the. Asking question stage, so do any board members have any questions they would like to address to Jeremy or anyone else? I see Pat with a hand raised.
Oh, I think Anita, Anita had hers raised first.
Okay, yeah, I'm on a, I'm on a phone that shows me only four at a time, so I have to switch around, Anita, you were first, you have four.
Thank you, I wanted to ask Jeremy if he has been able to track down the present status of the. Parking fund that Stuart made reference to that has probably been in existence for quite a while since these parking requirements. Have been in place. And I would like to know first if it exists, if the if the town has a handle on it. And how much is in it, if any, and if it was used for the Norton Street Parking Lot purchase.
So I've started diving into that more Anita, there is what we call, it's not. A trust fund, I will say, it is a, there is an account, a parking reserve account. And I am trying to figure out the origins of that and my gut says is really what was, what happened was they created a parking reserve account. Rather than a trust fund, but I'm digging into that, there is forty seven thousand dollars or so in the parking reserve account. That is what's there, since I've been with the town, there's been zero activity with that fund, no money going in. I asked Jody Hanson, the Finance Director, and and there has. Activity with that since she's been with the town. As well, so.
Sorry. Yeah. Sorry about the delay, can those funds just be put directly into. The town funds to make up for the very significant purchase price of the Norton Street Parking Lot? It seems appropriate.
That's a good, I know we are making lease payments using TIF funds is how those are being. Those, you know, that's. I can certainly ask the question of Audra and the Finance Director and the Town Attorney.
Yeah, and I would suggest that that is definitely an issue for the Select. Planning Board. As far as the allocation of those funds.
Right, and I think those, you know, if it's TIF funds, the TIF is also can be used for the Riverwalk and the Riverwalk can certainly use those funds.
I will say in recent discussions on TIF funds, they cannot be used for, I had. We had tried to, when we're, we're going through the TIFs right now and looking at amendments, potential amendments, and I recently spoke with the state. TIF Coordinator and and TIF funds cannot be directed at recreational trails.
And I do want to stay on target here, make sure that we're addressing what's before us, these funds. The account, the existence of the account matters for whatever reason. But but how it's allocated and what we can do with it is not really in our purview, and particularly not tonight. So I'm going to move the discussion along, does anybody else have any questions for Jeremy? Or anyone else?
Um, yeah, I did Ethan. And maybe, maybe these lots are already grandfathered in, but you know how the lots down in the. Is it the town landing where like Blaze and the Cotton Shop are? Are those gonna be going away then and it'll be a free for all or how do those work?
Well, I I think, I think it's important and I think there's some confusion or this idea that if the town does. Change our off-street parking requirements, that all of a sudden. Parking spaces are are going to go away. There is nothing in this that would. Force anyone to remove any parking from anywhere, right, and so those spaces that you're referring to, those are private lot, private spaces. I don't know all who ownership down there, my gut says Stuart could probably speak to some of that ownership down there, I believe he owns some of them. And so I don't know, I can bring Stuart into this, but again, there's nothing that would require. Anyone to get rid of parking spaces, right? Still, it's still up to property owners, if they want to provide parking on site, they can do that, if they want to provide parking in a remote lot, they can do do that. I think everyone knows, any smart savvy businessman or woman knows that. Certain types of businesses require parking and and will require people to still have parking for employees or guests or customers or whatever it is. And that will continue. You know, to be the place, it just is now letting the market drive it rather than being forced by a zoning ordinance. You know, or municipal regulation to drive that, and that's, that's my thought on that, Stuart, I don't know. If the board wants to recognize Stuart to maybe answer the question about those specific parking spaces.
Yeah, I'm happy to hear on, hear from Stuart on that if he has anything to add.
The spaces that Pat asked about or talks about are owned by us, those are all private property spaces. We monitor them and try to keep those for our customers. We certainly keep our eyes, we don't let any employees park there, it's a good turnover. During the COVID nineteen, we've taken, I think, four of the spaces and let the restaurants have outside tables, that hasn't made any impact at all. As far as customer satisfaction and places to park, so. I guess the answer to your question would be. Yes, with these changes, technically, we would not have to have those spaces. Probably technically, we don't have to have them anyway because we have so many grandfathered spaces. From the building that used to house the movie theater, Peter Otz and Gilbert's. We we probably have a credit of about a hundred. Now, maybe not a hundred parking spaces, but. We have, we have a significant credit of parking spaces to meet the zoning ordinance and the parking requirements, so.
And and I would, I would. I would just point out that when we talk about grandfathered parking spaces. It doesn't mean that what we're saying is there, there are businesses that don't have parking, their grandfather did not have the parking. Right, it's worked historically and it's continued to work, and I think Stuart's example demonstrates that.
Yeah.
I would add too, and then just to comment, just to kind of continue the questioning would. I would add too, and then just to comment, just to kind of continue the questioning would be. Stuart's point about restaurants. Into that area. I gotta try to bring Andrew in, he lost connection, I'm gonna see if I can get him back. But when they expanded into that area, I think that's another point. You know, it does allow these outdoor spaces if you do, and this happens again all over in these downtown, you know, communities. Across the country. Is it enabled businesses to actually come outside and come out into what always was required as parking? To have outdoor seating, outdoor venue, outdoor areas for their customers and their clientele to be in and. To me, I mean, it really does. Contribute to the vitality, the vibrancy of a downtown when you have outdoor activity. And if that outdoor in your downtown core, outside of municipal parking lots, is used up by off-street parking. Because it's required, really limits that, can limit that vibrancy and vitality of the downtown and the walkability. And so that's why communities are doing this across the country.
Okay, and Jeremy, I just want to make sure I understood that correctly. You're suggesting that. Parking requirements could lock up those spaces, they could not be used for these outdoor activities that you're talking about.
Correct, yeah, yep.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Here's a, for instance, I mean, you have Boa and you have Oyster River Wine Growers, they're establishing. Again, due to COVID, we've allowed them to establish, at least Oyster River, some, some outdoor seating areas. And so, you know, you could also expand that even more if they weren't required to have the parking that they have. And it's barely used outside behind that lot, which is comes in off the town lot between Longgrain and the town office. You go up this little slope and there's like three or four parking spaces up there. That are hardly ever used, which would be is kind of a neat outdoor area that could be used by those businesses outside, so.
Yeah, it helps. And Stuart, I just wanted to, I missed some of the earlier planning board discussions, I was away. Was there, were you saying that those, those lots that you own down there, those, those run with the building or those just separately owned? I'm actually unfamiliar with how those, how those work.
The, the parking spaces that are down at Bayview, what we call Bayview Landing. It's all part of that whole one big lot. That we own down there, so. And, you know, and we talk about the grandfathered parking from the sixteen Bayview building. You know, the word grandfather parking sort of implies that there is parking, but it probably should be better called phantom parking. Because there is no parking for all these grandfathered buildings, I mean. They all just existed on the, you know, they were existing buildings that had no parking, French and Braun has no parking.
Prior to zoning ordinances.
Yeah, prior to, prior to the zoning ordinance requiring parking.
Right.
And so they gave, they gave the property owners a parking credit. Basically to get the parking ordinance passed. And the credit was equal to what the ordinance required of the similar use that was there, so. As those uses changed, you know, for the movie theater was there with two hundred and twenty-five seats and. I can't off the top of my head say what the requirement is, like probably one space for every two seats. So that, you know, just the movie theater alone, you know, if you wanted to start from scratch, you'd have to have over a hundred seats to have a movie theater.
Right, right, right. But specific to my question, the, the Bayview Landing area, that. So that's owned separately as a parking lot, those, those spaces do not run particular to a certain building?
It's all one big property, so they're not, so it's all under one, it's all on one lot. So they're not designated to any specific building, no.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions anybody has of Jeremy or anyone else? Before we go into second public comment period. I don't hear or see any. So I will then go ahead and move on and open the second public comment period. Jeremy, do we have any additional comments?
No.
Anyone from the public who is on the Zoom meeting wish to speak?
Mark Ratner there.
Oh, he's from the public.
I'm from the public. I have to leave for my fourth town meeting of the day that starts at six o'clock out of, out of not a Zoom meeting, which is strange. But I gotta say, I think on the select, we're all looking forward to getting this in front of us and getting it done. As Stuart said, it should have been done a long time ago. Really looking forward to it. And I have to say personally, I agree with Stuart, we should take all the restaurants off. Because no matter where they find those spaces, the people are going to park where they're going to park. And most of the, a lot of the restaurant business happens at nighttime anyway, so those are my comments. I'll see you all soon.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, Anita, we're in the public comment period, so just a moment here unless you have a specific question that is in the public sphere. Any, any other comments? We don't have anything there, Jeremy?
No, sir.
Okay, Stuart, you're all set?
And any, Stuart, has to add anything new?
Okay.
I'm all set. Thank you very much again for considering it and I really appreciate your, all your work that you're putting into it.
Thanks, Stuart. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the second public comment period. At this point now, we're into, there will be no further comments from the public accepted. We're going to move into deliberation of the board. You could ask for clarification on a particular issue, but no new evidence may be entered into the record. By way of testimony. Unless it was erroneously omitted. It is not appropriate now for the public to interject during the actual decision-making process, so that's where we are now. A reminder that Andy, you are participating all the way through this discussion, just not to the vote. Okay, so the floor is open for anybody who has any questions or concerns they want to raise. I see Anita with her hand up. Go ahead, Anita. You're going to need to, okay, you did.
Jeremy, you read some. Comments by a gentleman who sent you an email. Wanting to remove the restaurants and. I think in the schools and some of the other things also from applicability and. You mentioned, did I understand you to mention that he had reasons for that? I'd really like to know. The rationale on recommending about taking those out as well.
Let me find that email.
You referring to Jeff Senders' email?
Yeah, I think so. That's the only email she would be referring to, I think. Let me grab it.
Cause that was sent around to everybody.
Might have just gone to me.
No, it was not sent to everybody.
Yeah.
All right. Um, hold on a second.
Sorry about that. Jeremy, do you think you could share that with his comments?
Sure, I can read this first, okay?
Yeah.
Trying to do a couple of things here. Hold on, I'm trying to see if I got more comments from somewhere else.
I can go ahead and read his actual email if you all like first into the record and. Or, but we're not doing it into the record. How are we doing on this, Jeannie? Are we running afoul of introducing new evidence?
No.
Well, that should have been on, that should have been read on.
I know, and that's, I think.
Hold on, let me, let me just say that I did read his changes, right?
You mentioned, yeah, you mentioned what he, what he was supportive and not supportive of. I'm gonna go ahead and read in, I'm gonna go ahead and read in his actual email. And then hopefully you can share his comments. Good evening, planning board in town of Camden. As a local business owner, I am in support of eliminating the off-street parking standards. For general businesses and restaurants in the B one and B T H zones. As indicated in the provided markup of the current draft amendment. Also, as indicated therein, eliminating the off-street parking requirements in the B one and B T H. For proposed places of public assembly, theaters, halls, churches and schools. Could create significant traffic congestion. I recommend as a civil engineer that those, these be handled on a case-by-case basis with a mandatory track study. For these zones, that the current off-street parking standards are not to be met. Thank you for your consideration. I trust you will discuss this thoroughly and publicly, Jeff Senders. So to clarify, to, to, to Anita's comment, he's actually recommending not to exempt. Places of public assembly, theaters, halls, churches and schools. And handle those on a case, handle those on a case-by-case basis.
That's what I read to you earlier.
I just sent everyone the email.
Ethan, can we do a roundtable for each member so that, so that we're not jumping back and forth and.
Absolutely, I will happily go around the room on that. I just wanted to see if Jeannie just sent out the emails, I wanted to give everybody an opportunity. To review that. He does provide a markup with comments of the ordinance itself. And I was hopeful that Jeremy could share, but he's juggling over there, so I'm not sure if he's got that up or not.
Uh, hold on.
Why wasn't that markup sent for us to discuss or review?
I assumed that it had been, Anita, I received it and I thought, I didn't even check the email send list. I assumed that it had gone around to everybody.
I got it this morning, I got it.
Just sent it to me and Jeremy.
Yeah, he did, I got it this morning. I'm sorry about that.
So, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to consider what thoughtful people, especially with his background.
Absolutely.
Would have to say about this before I make a decision. I, he has a lot more background than I do.
Right, and, and I will just put out there that there is an opportunity here, depending on how this goes with what the board feels. We have, we're having a public hearing. And we can opt to continue this hearing to a date certain. If we feel like there are changes we want to consider or incorporate.
All right. So Jeff's got some comments on this. Do you see the comments?
They're on the right there, yeah.
On the right-hand side, so, and I shared these, these, his proposal earlier in the meeting during the public comment period. What he is proposing, well, he, he. His first comment is, is it necessary to state this every time? And it is. Then he asked about a hundred seats, then his comment specifically, let's get down to.
If you click on the first, this two on the right, it'll bring you right to the space in the document.
Hold on, you see the lodging right here? He's proposing to also not exempt this from the lodging. Looks like. But schools. He doesn't think should be exempted. Places of assembly right here, that's why he X this out. And then the churches, why he struck that out as well. And his idea is that this would, would create too much confusion.
Well, not confusion, but congestion.
Sorry, sorry, yes. That's what we got. Those are the comments, Anita.
Okay.
And I think Jeremy, what I was hoping you could do, see on the right-hand side here, where it says this two, where it has its actual comments?
Where are you?
Click on the first, if you click on the first one on the right. It'll bring you to the spot in the document, yeah, that, that way, now everybody can see all the comments, so now you see them. These are the three relevant comments, really. The six forty-four A M, the six thirty-seven and the six thirty-six.
All right, he didn't like the, it's, he didn't want, does not want to remove the rooming house exemption, he just wants to somehow. Not include that every time when we say something's exempt, but we are saying that every time, we're going to continue that. His next comment is about. Hundred and fifty seats? I don't quite understand his comment. Anyone?
That one I didn't understand either.
You have to scroll down so we can see it.
It's right there, oh, sorry. It's right there, Mark.
Where?
Right here, that yellow block would be.
I think what he was saying is that. The, the requirement, the reduced requirement. He's asking if that kicks in after a hundred and fifty.
Yes, yes.
Is there a requirement before that?
There is not. And there is a requirement that the, the half kits kicks in at the hundred and fifty.
Right, and so that's not an issue.
And then his next comment would be schools. He said, and that would be commercial schools, daycares, public or private.
I think to clarify on that hundred and fifty seat issue. What Jeannie was asking was, is there no requirements up to a hundred and fifty and then, and then. From, from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty, you're required ten seats. That's not the way it is.
You would be required to have half the requirement that you currently are required.
For a hundred and sixty seats.
Hundred and fifty or more, right, hundred and sixty seats, so you're adding ten more seats, right? So you got for every seat, eight seats or one space for every sixteen space, so you would need. And the way the ordinance reads, you would need one additional space for those ten, those ten seats.
So there's no requirements up to the hundred and fifty?
Correct, we would be doing similar to what we're doing for retail, they're exempt.
So. So a hundred and fifty-four-seat restaurant would be required to have one parking space.
Yep. And a hundred and forty-nine-seat restaurant required to have zero.
And, and that's different from how it is now?
Well, now they're all required to have parking, right? So one space for every four seats and one space for every eight linear feet of bench space. That applies in the downtown or in the B three or in the B four or in the B R. We have a restaurant there, that would, that applies, but going into the downtown and the B T S. You would be exempt from any parking requirements in a restaurant downtown if you're under a hundred and fifty seats. Once you're at a hundred and fifty seats, you're required to meet the new standard, which the new standard would be one space for every eight linear, eight seats. And one space for every sixteen linear feet of bench space.
So half the requirement, basically.
Yeah.
No, it's not half the requirement because it's, Jeremy just said, it's exempt for the first hundred and fifty seats.
Right, half the increased requirement is what I meant to say.
Half the increased requirement. And I can see where Mark's going. If you want to say if you're at a hundred and fifty or more, you're required to meet the current standard. Well, I, that's fine. There, that's for this discussion and, and we can continue the hearing to a date certain and make that tweak. I get what Mark's saying. But we hadn't talked about that before and no one had an issue with it before, maybe it was. Fully understanding, but whatever you'd like to do on that.
Right, well, we, we are, we are in a position right now where, as Jeremy mentioned or as I mentioned earlier. We can continue this to, if we feel like there are changes that we want to see. We have had some testimonies suggesting that we do away with all of the requirements for restaurants. And I'm just curious to go around and see if anybody in the board wants to speak to this particular issue. As it pertains to restaurants, whether the one fifty requirement should even matter. And whether you think the new adjustment is the right one for those extra seats or if you have an issue with. Eliminating that initial requirement for up to a hundred and fifty seats. So I'm going to start with you, Pat. Anything to add to this?
Nothing to add, I mean. Part of it just, in my mind, and it's probably just what I'm used to, it depends upon the location of the establishment. I mean, where, you know, how much room do we have for a hundred and fifty-seat plus restaurant to go in? In the, in these districts? I, I don't know, I mean, so I'm okay with it.
Okay. You're okay with, with which part? Are you, you're okay with it as it's drafted by Jeremy?
Yeah, because.
Are you okay with eliminating the requirement altogether for restaurants or that's sort of where I'm trying to get at from the, I'm trying to tease that out.
Well. Since I just came in tonight about eliminating the requirement entirely for all restaurants. You know, maybe that could work too, because at our last meeting in the beginning, when we were going over the parking areas and. and how much parking space is available, not all of the spaces would be that desirable if you're wanting to go right down by the water. But, um, you know, I've always been able to get a space somewhere in Camden in the height of the summer at night. So I don't, maybe we don't need the requirement on the restaurants. And unless somebody has a parking space that's right there by them, that's where, to me, it's not really going to make much of a difference.
Yeah, I agree with that. You know, if there, if, you know, and, and I know that Stuart said, you know, like, for instance, like the waterfront, they have those, those parking places right there. I've gone in and sometimes in the past and rarely gotten a spot in there. And then you go out and you pull down, you drive down Bayview and you hope to park on the end there. And it's worse comes to worse. End up going around the corner and you try to find a parking spot on Chestnut Street or something. Um, you know, and you're further away than you want to be. But I, I wouldn't say that we always find parking where we want it. I, I definitely, it's not my experience in the town of Camden. It doesn't mean that there isn't parking around and it is terrible. It, I just, I think the idea that there's plenty of parking is not, is definitely not the experience of many people. Um, and so I do worry about that. And that, that was sort of where I wanted to go a little bit, if I may, to sort of usurp your comments, Pat. Um, Jeremy, is, is the confidence level we have that, that we won't see an overflow or an influx of, of employee parking closer to work with the relaxing, relaxing of these requirements and the experience of other towns?
Yeah. I mean, certainly, you know, I think it's important to understand that, you know, business owners and their employees, business owners, whether it be a retail shop or an accountant or, or a restaurant, um, you know, they are, they need to be on their, on their, on their employees on where they're parking. Um, and they have that ability to do that. I know the town office is doing that. We're, we're freeing up both lots um, between, um, us and Longgrain and then the street, the parking lot across is Washington Street from Longgrain. Those are now two hour, two-hour parking lots. Those are now not staff parking. We are parking remotely now. Um, the police department is, um, as of yesterday, strictly enforcing the two hours, um, everywhere in town, um, now. Um, and I've seen tickets, I've seen chalk, um, in the last two days all over the place. So I think, um, I don't know if that answered your question, but I think, I think that was trying, I, I think I did my best.
Well, I mean, yeah, part of my question was whether there was any evidence from other towns or cities. You've cited that numerous people have made these changes and gone to these new relaxed requirements, doing away with the requirements. Has there been any issue with the, uh, return of employee?
I can, I can, I've read a ton of studies and I, I, I kind of hope you guys do a little bit of homework too on some of this and share this stuff with your, you know, with each other. And again, I mentioned Sandpoint, Idaho, um, Burlington, Bath, Brunswick, Belfast, um, where it is not there in issues with parking downtown for customers, for visitors, for, um, you know, people we want to bring into town, um, because they're being used by employees. Um, employees and businesses need to understand that they need to allow those spaces for, um, those that support our businesses. Um, and those are our customers. So I have not seen any evidence that, that this led to a negative at all. There's tons of evidence that doing this, um, creates an economic, you know, vibrancy, vitality, enables small business, um, entrepreneurship, um, is, uh, you know, there's plenty of evidence of that around. And I get that Camden is unique, um, but we're not that unique, um, that we can't, um, you know, amend our parking to get in line with more appropriate, you know, um, kind of appropriate smart growth planning, if you will. I mean, because that's what this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, having on-street, off-street parking for every use in a downtown is, that is, you know, decades old and, and thinking. And it's not where, um, you look at, again, look across the country and downtowns are, are vibrant and they're, um, because of a lot of these changes that communities have made.
Okay. Thanks, Jeremy. And I apologize because I think partly because I wasn't intended to the former workshops. I may have, sort of, again, you stepped on the toes there a little bit, Pat, and usurped the comment. So I wanted to get back to you first before I go to the next person, Chrisso. But do you have anything further, Pat, that you wanted to add as far as your perspective on that? Um, the, the restaurant requirement and also, uh, perhaps even, uh, some of Jeff Senders' comments about the other locations like, uh, assembly halls, theaters, churches, schools?
Um, yes. As far as Jeff's, uh, comments go, I do. And I guess I feel like, listening to his comments now, I feel like my fallout, when we initially reviewed this, was thinking, well, we have our established schools, established churches, um, established gathering halls, like the Opera House, for example. And I wasn't thinking that we would be getting any new schools or new assembly places in because that already seemed like a fairly met market as far as I could see. But I think his comments are valid. I mean, if for some reason a new schools happen to open around town somewhere or something like that, then yeah, maybe we should look at that on a case-by-case basis. That, or Jeremy, you're raising your hand.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good point, Pat. Now, I, and Ethan, I just want to just, um, I think we need to remember too, much like Stuart said about hotels and inns, you know, they need to provide for their customers. Um, and it's really about the clients that they, you know, that they have coming. Which means, same goes for a school. If you're going to get a school that's going to want to show up in, into a community that doesn't have any, and they don't have off-street parking for them, they're, you know, it's, does this work for us really establish a school where we don't have parking? So I gotta believe that any of these schools that may come, um, you know, I think it's important to understand too, that any use that's allowed in the zone could happen, right? It could happen. Um, could you get 150, a 200, another 200-foot restaurant? Absolutely, you could get that. Could you get a church of a 5,000 square feet in existing downtown building? Sure. Get a church that just on Sundays rents, uh, you know, an office space from somebody. And they, I mean, we, I used to see this a lot in Bangor where you have small little churches of 50 people or 40 people that meet every Sunday in one small downtown office. If you're going to do that, I mean, and then it applies to those churches as well, you know? I mean, it's, so it's just, I think it's, I think you just got to look at it from kind of that perspective, that any use is possible. But at the same time, every one of these uses also needs to understand what their client is or who their customers are or who they're, from a church perspective, who their parishioners are. You know, so.
Right. And I, and I, I, I take your point there, Jeremy, but there is also in that, what I'm hearing from you is a lot of, well, the retailers need to understand or the businesses need to understand. But that, sometimes that is the role of government, right? Where we actually have to say, you need to provide these things instead of counting on them to do it on their own goodwill. I'm not saying that I'm one side or another on that, but I do want to point that out, that if there's an employee from a particular business in town who decides, hey, you know, I know exactly when the chalk guy comes around. I know exactly how to go out and Stuart, I know you told us how to avoid it. Go and rub the chalk off the tire, um, you know, and stay in that spot. That does affect the town. Um, so I'm just going to throw that out there. I, I want to get to Chrisso because he's had his hand up for a while and then I'm going to keep moving around the circle, Jeremy. Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm sure you're going to get an opportunity to jump in. Go ahead, Chrisso.
Uh, well, I got a, a number of things, um, to, even your point there about an employee. I mean, there's nothing right now that would prevent a, a, an employee from doing that currently. Like, if someone who works in a store could take a convenient parking space right now, there, that doesn't, removing parking requirements doesn't change.
Well, unless they, they actually have an off-site spot where the employee can park.
Yeah, but there's nothing.
Which they might do away.
There's nothing to enforce that. It depends on where they are.
Absolutely. I agree with that. But it, but it is removing that, possibly removing that spot.
Right. But again, well, so, I mean, there's a couple of things. There are options, as, as Jeremy has said, and as we've said before, this doesn't, this doesn't make it so that a business can't have parking spaces and have parking spaces for employees. Like, they can do that. There are options. And that's, that's just parking. Um, you know, in terms of, is there enough parking in Camden? Absolutely, there's enough parking. It's the American mindset that I need to be able to park three feet from the door of the business I want to go to, that we kind of have to rethink a little bit. And so, you know, for me, and looking through, um, Jeff's comments about churches and schools, well, we have churches and schools already. And we're, another thing I sort of want to remind people, we're only talking about two very small sections of town. You know, we're not, we're really just talking about a very concentrated part of town that already has a number of these businesses and meeting spaces and churches. We have churches, they are on Sunday. So there's not as much parking demand. When the Opera House has a concert, it's in the evening, parking works. You know, and for me, on the restaurant thing, I'm totally fine with removing all rest, like, getting rid of the 150-seat minimum too. You, you know, as I've said before, the problem with the requirement is all there, all you're doing is requiring a business to pay for parking somewhere in town. But there's no guarantee that the business or its customers are using that parking space. So unless you're telling your customers or whatever to go somewhere, and certain businesses, as we've said, whose benefit it is to have parking for their customers are going to continue to do that. So for me, I just don't see the, the need for complicated additional exemptions or case-by-case scenarios that, that have to be ruled. And, you know, in, and I think Mark's point earlier, you know, it's sort of like, so, you know, why is it 145 restaurant doesn't need one and 155 does? You know, it's a little bit of an arbitrary number based on a couple of existing businesses, to me.
Yeah, I agree with that too, that, just the arbitrariness of it. Um, okay. Anything else, Chrisso?
Here's the zoning map for everyone to see. This is the BTH and this is, uh, the B1.
Yep. We are talking about a pretty small area.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I'm going on now to Mr. Segenthaler.
All right. First of all, when you say we're talking about a very small area, we're talking about the entire downtown of Camden. All right. And second of all, uh, every, every business in downtown Camden would have at least two employees working all day long where they park. Um, and the, the town, the town does have a parking problem. And you, you know, listen, listen to all the, the controversy that's been created about the bump outs downtown and the loss of four parking spaces. I understand. I mean, the parking ordinance is a mess and it needs to be changed. And it's, it, it's, it's requires too many spaces. But why, why is the rest of the town responsible for providing parking spaces for a, a, a business to do their business? I mean, that's, that's cost of doing business. I mean, uh, I mean, it, it troubles me that the, the speed that we're trying to push this through and the, the impact, I mean, the real impact it's going to have in the future. I mean, when we do this, it's done. So, so when we have New, New Jersey Joe come and buy Stuart Smith's property, all right, he's, he's not as savvy as Stuart Smith. He doesn't know he needs those parking spaces. So he turns that all into, uh, whatever. I mean, he builds, builds a building there. He, 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 he turns it into outdoor seating. They're gone. They're gone forever. And that is, I mean, that's where we're headed here. And I, I know, I mean, I, 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 I see that, that it really needs to be revamped, but do we know what we're doing? I mean, do we really understand the consequences of that? Pat, are you up? And, and, and that's my concern. I mean, I, you, you know, la- last time we talked about it, we agreed that, that restaurants, the four restaurants, the larger restaurants in town were, um, uh, they have an impact on the downtown parking. They do have an impact on it. So, okay, we came up with a number of 150, which narrows it down to two of the, four larger restaurants? And then it's only for 150 and above that the required seating for? I mean, that's, that's a joke. I mean, it doesn't even need to be in the ordinance if, if it's that, if we're talking about those numbers. I've done. Next.
Um, okay, Mark, can I, can I just follow up with you though? Where we're at right now, I mean, I, I, I get the reluctance to move anything forward. Do you have any specific changes that you would like to see or are we just back to square one with you?
You know, I know, I know it's a lot. Options that, that we're, we're just not even looking at. And, and, you know, we could, we could, here's a concept, all right? If, if a retail business had two employees working in their space, all right? And, okay, if, if they paid a nominal fee, say a hundred dollars a year for parking for employees at the Norton Street parking lot, and that goes into the parking fund, now that business says, hey, you know, we're paying for employee parking, go park there, use it. It's a kind of a, it gives them a sense of, well, we're paying for it, so we better use it, rather than parking on the street, washing off the chalk marks. And, you know, we all know that happens.
Okay. But so what I'm getting from you is more of a frustration that maybe this is being rushed too far, too fast and not having a complete picture.
Exactly.
Okay, okay. Anita, you're up now.
Thank you. I've been listening to all the comments. I, I have a number of comments or questions myself. I'm not sure where to start exactly. It seems, generally speaking, it seems like the, um, the concern keeps circling back to, uh, employees taking spots and that the solution is to find a way to manage employee parking. I think the two-hour parking, uh, rule certainly, uh, as was mentioned, went a long way towards resolving that. As Stuart mentioned. And it might be wise to focus some more on that specific issue. Generally speaking, I want to say that I, um, I'm in agreement with this plan. I'm in agreement with Jeremy's comments that, um, this, this can really help in a lot of ways to, uh, add more dynamism to downtown. So I, I really like where it's going. I like the plan. I, um, I hear what Mark is saying about his concerns. And, um, one thing that I've noticed, I know Stuart has been here a lot longer and he has a much better sense of the history, but, uh, in the time that I've been here, I've seen a lot of, uh, town-owned public parking added. to downtown and lots purchased. And areas opened up and improved for public, general public parking. And yet, when every spot or any spot along the street is removed for whatever reason, Mike was just referenced with regard to sidewalk expansion or something, there is a lot of hubbub about that. So I think there's a sort of a a reaction that is not in keeping with what's really been going on through these last couple of decades. I just wanted to mention that. So I, I thought that the comments about the I have mixed feelings about the restaurant parking in general, the restaurants have a lot of activity in the evening, but which is when the mostly the shops are closed. The same goes for churches with the exception of, say, if there were synagogue or Seventh Day Adventist Church, which meets on Saturday. So that sort of thought does lend credence to the concept of a case by case basis. Okay, if it's a if it's a synagogue or some meeting group that meets on Saturdays when it's very busy on the streets during the day. And that's one thing, if it's Sunday, when most of the shops are closed, and that's another thing. So that supports the case by case concept and that might also be true for schools. So the, let's see. Going to the 150 seat and above restaurant, I think there's, I, I found trouble. I may have been misreading it, but I had a little trouble understanding if it's over 150 seats, then the parking is this much for this many seats and the question comes to mind, well, is that for total or is that for that many seats above 150? Now you need one parking space. So I think there's a little confusion and Mark was kind of expressing some confusion about that too. I feel that confusion about well, how does that particular rule apply it for the under 150 number? So maybe adding a little verbiage if you, if you're going to keep that.
I would just say, and maybe just to comment, the, how it reads right now, proposed. It says restaurants, bars and lounges, except for those in the B1 and BTH was less than 150 seats, which are exempt from off street parking requirements.
Right.
So they're
Now read the part above 150.
For restaurants, bars and lounges with 100, okay. I, I see what you're saying. It says with 150 or more seats, one space for every eight seats. So that is assuming going to where Mark said, which would be then, then how it reads would then, Mark, sorry to clarifying what you said earlier. I was incorrect. The way it reads currently would say if you're 150 or more, you need one space for every eight seats. No matter what.
Right.
How it reads. So let me know how you want that to work and, and either can keep it as is, as is would require, yes, if you're 150 seat or more restaurant, you're having parking for all of your seating. So I would say if I'm coming into Camden, I'm going to have a restaurant for 149.
Right. So, so thank you, Jeremy. That, that's where I, I read that and I, you know, I felt confused about.
I can certainly clarify that easily and will.
Your goal was, Jeremy, your goal though was to, was to have it for any seats above 150?
Correct.
That was your intent, right? Because I didn't think, I didn't think you intended, I mean, you intended to, to put that on the entire thing. Okay, so do you have any further comments?
Yes, please. Time. Responding again to Mark's comments. Mark was saying that, that it's really not up to the town to support the businesses. If they want to open a business, they need to provide parking. I can understand that point of view, but on the other hand, we have also expressed the desire to stimulate commercial activity in the downtown and be supportive of it generally. And we also talked about how people, when they're downtown, they do visit more than one business typically. So they're not necessarily coming to just one business. So I would be in support of continuing as the town has been doing in the last couple of decades, supporting parking in general. If they can add more public parking, great. If they can improve the signage, great. If they can find, if they, the town, we can find a way to to further discourage employee parking in the areas where we need to keep the areas open for our visitors. That's where I'd like to see some focus. Again, signage, where to park?
Thanks, Anita. All right, Andy, it's your turn.
Can you hear me?
You can.
Yeah. So I think on the restaurants, I'm in support of just eliminating that requirement altogether for those larger restaurants as well. It, it seems like an unfair burden on those businesses and you know, I, I don't feel like it's going to create a huge problem, you know, like you said, and like Stuart Smith said, you go downtown to go out for dinner, you find a place to park and you go eat, you know, I don't see that creating a problem. And I feel the same way about the churches and schools. That we should stay with the proposed amendment. And to Anita's point on employee parking, we should just find a better way to control that, to stop people, you know, wiping off the chalk or whatever they do to, to minimize any congestion caused by that. So.
So generally in favor of the proposal as written with possibly a clarification for the restaurants? You wanted to possibly just do away with those altogether?
Do, I think we should just do away with the requirement for those larger restaurants to provide parking.
Okay, thank you very much, Andy. Okay, I'm going to go back around. I saw Anita with a hand up and Mark with a hand up. I'm going to go to Mark first since he has had the longest wait. Go ahead, Mark.
I'd just like to point out again, the, the problem we're having with the new bump outs created. And one thing that comes to mind is nobody is taking ownership of how it was created. You talk to, no, you talk to the town and it was DOT. You talk to DOT and it was because of the town. And I, I, I just say, you know what, if we were passing out an award for this project, everybody would be taking credit. So, you know, for, for everybody that feels like this is a good proposal, take credit for it in the future. That's all I have to say.
And I, can I just comment about that? I will say that the one bump out that a lot of people have concern about is the Chestnut Street one. It actually is being changed or was changed today while they were pouring concrete because we identified a crack in some of the concrete that was poured today. And it was something that the town thought we would have to address anyway and shorten that up. So that island did get shortened either today or it will be shortened tomorrow. Mark, I just wanted to clarify that for you because you and I talked about that island earlier today, that is, or yesterday. That is being addressed or has been addressed and shortened up already. Just clarifying that and Dave St. Laurent will take the credit for that one.
Okay. And I just wanted to note that I also saw Chris with a hand up. So Chris, do you want to jump in real quick and then I'll get back to Anita?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to sort of go back to a couple of things that Mark had said about not knowing what this will do and not knowing what will happen. And I think that you know, we can look at other towns and communities and see where this gains us. And even, I know you're, you and I, I mean, seeing, hearing a lot of comments about losing parking on Main Street, but if you look at what's happened in Rockland where, you know, one street is now closed to traffic. Another street has just been made one way. It's actually improving traffic. Because people are not sort of trolling Main Street, looking for parking places. To Anita's point, if we have better signage to where we have lots, there is sufficient parking in Camden for downtown. And this will actually help ease traffic. And that's proven, I mean, we've seen that in lots of communities around here where we're doing some of this stuff. Thomaston is much better now. So I just like, it will actually make things better. And if people are parking strategically and, you know, a lot of us park in a lot and walk to our errands. I just don't see that it's a, I don't see that it's the disaster that I think you might think.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So and I just wanted to note that I think we have been joined by Sandra Hamilton. Sandra, if I'm not mistaken, you are involved with Zoots?
Excuse me, but
I know, I know, Jeannie, I'm on that. I just wanted to say, we have closed the public comment portion of the hearing, but I wanted to let you know that Jeremy did represent that Zoot was in favor of the proposed changes. So that's where we're at. And you are muted, by the way. I don't know if that's by Jeremy or someone else. But welcome to the meeting.
This is only my second ever Zoom meeting, so I'm completely inept. I'm sorry to the margin, but I had, you know, it was a very important issue to us is having just moved.
Right, right. I just, I'm going to cut you off because I have to, not because I want to, but yeah, so we can't have any more public comment, but welcome to the meeting and you're welcome to observe if you like. I think Jeremy represented your, your position pretty well.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay, and now I want to get back to Anita who was very patiently waiting her turn.
Thank you. Actually, when you saw my hand up, that was a thumbs up, but since you're letting me talk again.
Wait, do I take that back?
I did have a comment, Mark. I would be happy to, I hope I'm not making a mistake by speaking for the Pathways Committee, Camden Rockport Pathways Committee in saying that we did weigh in with the town and DOT. It is our goal to create safe pedestrian passage in the two towns of Camden and Rockport. And the bump out that is going on Chestnut is part of our input to, to do so. There are very wide crossings that have to be done, which is fine if you can, if you have a sprightly walk, but there are those who, who are not able to walk quickly and who are exposed for way too long in the traffic. So and I will go back to my comment previously where I said that we have created in the last couple of decades, a lot more public parking than we have had. So the loss of a few street parking spots in, in favor of pedestrian safety, I'm all for. And if you want to give me an award for it, I'll take it. On behalf of the Pathways Committee.
Thank you, Anita. Um, okay, and I guess I'll, I'll jump in now too, because I haven't really spoken much. Jeremy, do you have something you want to jump in on? Yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we run these meetings from five to seven and this Zoom meeting ends at seven o'clock. So.
Yep. That's fair. And what time are we at now? We're at?
Six forty-one.
Yeah, so I think we're, 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 we're running up against it. I'll try to be brief in my comments. I did, you know, I do confess that I missed the last meeting on this and those who know me know that when we come to issues of civil engineering, I default to my friend Jeff Sanders, who was a former planning board member. So I do share his concerns about the specifics of the schools and the churches and the assembly halls. I recognize it's a little late in the game to be adjusting those. But it is always possible to not exempt them. And then in the future exempt them if we decide we really want to do that. But someone with us, with the, with the, with the background that he has, his testimony carries weight with me. And I, I do, you know, whether or not we actually see something coming up in town on those issues. I'm not, I'm, I, you know, I think that it's, we have to be careful because as Pat said, you know, some, some building could be bought in, you know, in total and turned into a, a school. And, and we can't just rely on the school to provide their own parking. But go ahead, Jeremy, I see you have a hand up.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I do see them somewhat similarly as, as a restaurant and especially when you're looking at places of assembly. Because that could be a theater, that could be, you know, a dance hall or whatever. I, I think if you're going to go down that road, I would recommend using the same standard of the 150, occupant load of 150 or more or something along those lines. I don't know. But that's something we could think about. It sounds like, again, at six forty-three, maybe you want to give me some direction? Maybe you want to move this forward as is? Or again, give me direction to make some.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to right now. And in my mind, I, you know, I'm one person, one voting member of the board, and I've heard everybody else speak. It seems like in general, there's a pretty strong support for the ordinance as written. With possibly the exception of pulling out, just removing the restaurants in their entirety. And then of course, you know, Mark seems to be looking at it from a broader perspective that it just needs to be addressed more wholesale and maybe we're rushing the process. So I, I guess what I want to try to do is take the temperature of the board on this and, and, and see whether we feel like we want to try to move forward with something that we have as written, whether we have specific comments that we want to give Jeremy to rework that do not rewrite this ordinance, but rework Jeremy's work just a little bit, whether it's removing the restaurants or something like that, with minor tweaks. Or whether we feel like we're really rushing the whole process and we need to re, you know, to circle back on the whole thing. I do have a feeling, based on my understanding, it's the select board is looking to get something in front of the voters in November. I think that's something to consider. And I do believe that they can move on this without the, the planning boards say so. But it is really in our purview to try to get them the best ordinance that we can. And I think that's what we should be trying to do. If we think it's not feasible in the timeframe that we have, that's something the board can also jump in on. It may be that we have one of our first, you know, first ever non-unanimous type decisions and that's okay too. We sometimes will have those. So I guess now I'm going to just ask each individual member to chime in on that specific issue, whether you think we should continue with the idea that we can give specific feedback to Jeremy, whether we should continue with the idea that we need just general more discussion or whether we should take a vote on the ordinance as it is. Does that work for everybody? Okay, so I'm going to start again, just based on the order of my screen, Pat.
I can go along with eliminating the requirement for restaurants of 150 seats or more. I certainly support management. You didn't ask this specifically, Ethan, but
That's fine.
I, I really think as Anita initially brought up, manage the employee parking. It sounds like it's being looked at certainly, but maybe if there are other avenues or whatever could be done, or if it's being managed just fine now, then that's good too. But that I think is a key area. Signage of where to park, I think is really important because I'm not, and maybe I don't look really a lot of the times, but I'm not even really sure where all the parking lots are in town. So I think that's really important that that gets well, good visibility. So there's the restaurants. I guess the churches and the schools, assembly halls. I think Jeremy had some good comments about anybody coming in, you know, wanting to create an establishment like that in our small little downtown area. They would keep parking in mind that I would think that would be, just be part of the whole review process and at least if I was starting one of those, you know, where would I put something? But then Ethan, when you said, well, government has a role to protect to a certain degree, I, I think that's correct too. So I guess that's the only one I'm a little unsure of right now. You know, should it be case by case or should we just go with the plan, our amendments as currently written? Leaving it upon anybody wanting to create one of those establishments, thinking it out logically and thinking about parking on their own. I mean, parking would be a big Parking would be a big. Aspect, so I don't see how somebody could overlook it, but then, you know, never say never, too. So the churches and schools, Assembly Halls, theater, that's my own one point that I'm unsure of. Restaurants eliminate that 150 or more and. Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think I've got a pretty good good read on that. And Chris, though.
I think it's pretty clear where I am. I'm good with the ordinance as is or well with the amendments. And I'm be totally fine with just getting rid of the requirement for restaurants of any kind.
And what do you stand on the churches?
I. I think that we can leave them as is that I'm not worried about the churches. I mean, we have them already. It works.
Okay. And Mark.
I think it's pretty clear where I'm at. I don't I don't approve of the whole thing in general. All right, the fact is, I mean, you you know, we say we have. The parking ordinance is a problem because it restricts business. But. We don't have any empty spaces in town. And it's not really affecting businesses. Yes, it's it's complicated to come up with parking spaces. But does that mean we just eliminate the whole parking ordinance? Or do we just look at the whole parking ordinance and revamp it and like, all right, maybe maybe if we just cut all the regulations right in half. That solves a problem, but to eliminate it totally, just. I'm not, I'm not going with it.
Okay.
I don't agree with it and the.
Anita.
Anita, you got to move a little bit just because we got we got to finalize this and then try to address the next meeting.
Okay, I'm I'm in favor. I'm in favor generally. I would like to see the tweaks. So that we have an opportunity to look over it again. Those tweaks relate to the restaurants and. Churches and that sort of thing. I think it's okay to eliminate the need. For parking for churches and I'd like to to in our discussion next time. I would like to know how this would be followed up with regard to improving. The knowledge of where the parking spaces are and improving the getting employees to park in those spaces.
Okay, thank you. And Andy, real quick.
Yeah, so I'm in favor of moving the proposal forward. I I think we again should eliminate, you know, the parking requirement for those restaurants. The larger restaurants. And, you know, as I think about the churches and schools a little bit more. I I feel like the schools present more of a risk than the churches. Just because of, you know, you've got five days a week and all day long in classes. So. So maybe, you know, eliminate the requirement for churches to have, you know, parking places available. But for the schools, do that on a case by case basis.
Yeah, I think that's sound logic. Yeah.
And then, you know, I like the ideas of the, you know, the parking signs. And better control of the employee parking. So.
Yeah, and those those unfortunately are not really within our purview, but I do remember.
Right.
Jeremy saying that the the police are enforcing more and things like that. On the two hour spots and signage is sort of something that we can send along as a recommendation. All right, I'm going to make a judgment call here. I'm just going to take a stab at this. I'm going to throw out there. I'm going to sort of follow Andy's lead on this and see if we can get some traction on it. I know where Mark stands. But I'm going to suggest that we we continue this. To a date certain, which I'm going to suggest July 15. So that we don't run afoul of the holiday weekend. But I'm also going to suggest that that we have Jeremy tweak the ordinance enough to remove the requirement for restaurants over 150. That we also. Remove the schools from the exempt portion. Because I think there is a risk there at least, and I don't think that the harm is so great if we have to review a school and say, okay. But I, you know, and and I, because I do give deference to some of these concerns. Does that sound like something I'm, well, I don't know. I'm just going to go ahead and ask for a second on my motion. To continue to a date certain July 15. With the instruction, remove restaurants over 150 and remove schools from the exempt list. That's my motion.
I'd like to see a case by case for schools and churches because of when not knowing when the churches meet.
And good.
Okay, so I have a second from Chris O and then a proposed amendment from Anita. And does anybody want to second Anita's amendment?
Second.
To add churches to the list of non-exempt.
Oh, yeah.
Case by case.
Right, but that's not exempt, right? So, okay.
How can you write an ordinance with a case by case?
I don't know. We just, we just, we just leave them non-exempt, Mark. That's pretty much where it is. As is, it doesn't, what we're doing is removing the exemption that's being put into the amendment. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't understand the case by case.
If if well, if a church comes into town right now, they have to figure out how to find the parking spaces. Correct?
Right.
So if we, as this ordinance is written, if a church is going into town now, as it's amended. A church would have to find no parking spaces. So we go back to. This, the old ordinance for the churches and the schools, that they will have to find some parking or there's some sort of. Mechanism for them to get past that with like the the Board of Appeals, right?
Can I, can I just? Can I say on in your current ordinance, at the very end of this parking session section? It says where a proposed use cannot be reasonably fit into one of the above categories. What if you just said when a proposed use cannot reasonably comply with the parking requirements? The planning board shall prescribe the required number of off-street spaces, which gives you. The ability to be flexible with uses that may have a high demand. That are coming in and so you look at it and say, we know you can't meet it. So this is what we say you're going to need. Seems pretty clean, I think.
I like that.
I do. I do like that suggestion, too, Jeannie. Thank you.
We got a we got a motion and a second on the floor and I'm just, I'm just, I'm vying for time. Keep in mind.
Yeah, and I will allow the amendment to my motion. So we'll bring Anita's in with the churches. So then we're just going to go around and do a roll call vote.
I'd like the phraseology to to clarify that someone can appeal. So that's what case by case.
There's a process already laid out in there.
Yeah, that's already that's already in the in the whole thing. So. So I'm going to go again in the order that I've been going. So I'm going to go first to Pat.
So.
Are you clear on the are you clear on the motion altogether?
Well, Jean's comment being the last one that we're considering, right?
Correct.
Yeah, we're 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 we're.
And that's just clarifying. That's clarifying how the case by case for for schools and churches. That's what.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, then. Then I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, that's an I. And Chris O. I. Mark.
No.
No, Anita.
Hi.
Hi, and myself, I'm an I. So this is an instruction. To Jeremy, not to pass the ordinance, but to reword the ordinance under the suggestions given. And we will reconvene this hearing or continue this hearing to July 15.
Perfect. That's great.
And and we can have further discussion and we can make a final determination then. And Jeremy, you have a pretty good lead on what the changes need to be made.
Yep.
Okay.
I would say before we finalize this meeting, I'm just sorry to be rushing. I'll try to add maybe 15 more minutes onto these meetings. I know you guys.
Can I just say, if you want to accept more public comments, then you need to say you need to. Clarify that now. If you don't, then that's fine. But if you want to hear from people again, then you need to say you'll reopen public comments.
Thank you, Jeannie, and I'm I'm going to make a unilateral decision and say I will welcome more public comments. I always feel like it's it's an open process is good. So.
Like we got all all in support of that, it looks like Ethan will do that.
Yep, okay. And I want to have I want to have a full discussion on this. So thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, everyone. I know you've got one more thing to do, but I just wanted to say. We need a motion, Chris, to close this meeting and I'm counting on you.
I'm ready.
Hold on, really, really quick, Chris. So can I say something before?
Yeah.
Can I say the open space piece that I sent to you? Just maybe brush up on that so we can have that conversation on July 15. Well, we'll take the first off due to the holiday weekend. If that's okay with everyone and just brush up on that, try to understand what that is. If you have questions. Feel free to email them to me on that one and feel and email everyone in the group. Because we need to all be on the same page and all be discussing together. Okay?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, I got a second from Seagull Dollar. All in favor, raise your hand. It looks unanimous.